The zoning board, um, public meeting, uh, the zoning board of adjustments of the township of Bernards. Um, I will first read the, uh, open public meeting statement. In accordance with the requirement of the open public meeting law, notice of this meeting of the board of adjustment of the township of Bernards was posted on the bulletin board in the reception hall of the municipal building, Colley Lane, Basking Ridge, New Jersey, was mailed to the Bernardsville News, Whippany, New Jersey, the Courier News, Bridgewater, New Jersey, and was filed with the township clerk all on January ninth, two thousand and twenty-five, and was mailed electronically to all those people who have requested individual notice. The following procedure has been adopted by the Bernards Township Zoning Board of Adjustment. There will be no new cases heard after ten PM and no new testimony heard after ten thirty PM. And our first, um, first thing to do here is, uh, salute the flag. So if you can, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, Ms. Lehman, you want to give roll call?
Chairwoman Baumann.
Here.
Ms. Herrera.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Ms. Padici.
Here.
Ms. Popstar.
Here.
Ms. Trapp.
Here.
Mr. DeLuca.
Here.
Mr. Quinn.
Here.
Mr. Schla.
Here.
For the record, Ms. Lehman is present.
Thank you. Uh, we have some members who let us know they were not able to make tonight's, uh, meeting. Do I have a motion to approve their absences?
So moved.
Ms. Padici, thank you.
Second.
Carl Kraus, thank you.
Mr. Kraus.
Mr. Kraus.
Not Dr. Kraus, just Mr. Kraus.
Uh, next on the agenda, uh, the agenda is the approval of minutes, the October eighth, two thousand and twenty-five regular minutes. Does anybody have any comments or motion to approve?
I'll do a motion to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Trapp, and thank you, Ms. Herrera.
Um, Ms. Herrera is not eligible to go on the minutes because she was not at the ten A meeting, so she can't set her as motion. Thank you.
I'll do the second. I'll do the second.
And Ms. Padici.
Uh, Ms. Padici.
Yes.
I'm sorry, were we not ready for roll call? Were there were no changes, right?
So, wait, the motion was to approve all of these?
The minutes.
Oh, the minutes, the minutes. I'm sorry.
That's a good Ms. Popstar?
Yep.
Ms. Trapp?
Yes.
Chairwoman Baumann?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, next on the agenda is the approval of resolutions. The first one is Mohammed Shadri, and that is ZB two five zero one four. Do I have a, any comments or a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve this draft.
Thank you, Ms. Popstar.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Trapp.
Uh, Ms. Padici.
Yes.
Ms. Popstar.
Yes.
Ms. Trapp.
Yes.
Chairwoman Baumann.
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, next is the, um, resolution of Ashley and Troy Namini, and that is ZB two five zero two three. Motion to approve or any comments?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Trapp.
I'll second it.
And thank you, Ms. Popstar.
Thank you. Ms. Padici.
Yes.
Ms. Popstar.
Yes.
Ms. Trapp.
Yes.
Chairwoman Baumann.
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, next is the resolution of Eric and Elizabeth Schaefer, ZB two five zero two two. Any comments or motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve this draft.
Thank you, Ms. Popstar.
I'll second.
And Ms. Trapp, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Padici.
Yes.
Ms. Popstar.
Yes.
Ms. Trapp.
Yes.
Chairwoman Baumann.
Yes.
Thank you.
And the last of the resolutions is, um, the, the Yon Resolution, ZB two five zero two five. Comments or motion?
I'll make a motion to approve this draft.
Thank you, Ms. Padici.
I'll second.
And Ms. Trapp, thank you.
Ms. Padici. Ms. Popstar.
Yes.
Ms. Trapp.
Yes.
Chairwoman Baumann.
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, so we'll go into the next section of the, uh, public hearings, but we were notified that the debrise, um, application, uh, cannot be heard this evening. Um, if anybody was here for debrise, they will be carried to the next meeting, which is December third. Uh, they were, they had proper notice, so...
Yeah, just for the sake of the record, uh, the debrise did properly publish notice in the newspaper as well as serve, uh, certified mailings on all property owners within two hundred feet of the subject property, which is sixty-two Oakley Street. Uh, so their notice, uh, will be sufficient to carry them through to December third. So if anybody's here for, uh, for that matter, uh, this is your official public notice that it will be heard on December third.
Okay. So do we have Shaw here with us?
Yes, we do.
Would you like to come up?
Thank you.
How are you?
Very well, how are you?
Thank you. So this is, um, Shaw, and this is block one zero five oh seven, lot eleven, forty-one Sentinel Drive with bulk variances, ZB two five zero two six.
And, and for the sake of the record, I also want to note, uh, that the Shaws have also, uh, properly published notice and served notice on property owners. Their, uh, notice is sufficient for both content and timing. Uh, Mr. Shaw, if I could swear you in?
Yes, please.
Please, uh, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Could you just state your name for the record?
My name is Ashish Shaw.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Would you like to tell us why you're here?
Yes, we have a patio that we are constructing. We obtained all the proper permits, and we would like to install a pergola on top of our patio. It was a raised pergola, uh, I'm sorry, a raised patio, and the pergola will sit on top of the patio itself. There will be no, um, walls or to the sides of it, and the roof is louvered. The reason for the variance is that it is within five feet, it's about fi- approximately five feet from the closest part of our house.
Okay.
And by zoning rules, um, it is supposed to be ten feet, so we're asking for a variance for that.
Okay. Um, I see in your application that you have, um, some pictures?
Yes.
Did you take these pictures?
Yes, we did.
When did you take the pictures?
When we submitted the application, so about month and a half ago, two months ago.
Okay. And this is how it appears, um, still today, correct?
It is mostly completed, um, but it's pretty much the same way. It, the, the, the base of the construction looks exactly the same way for the most part. I mean, there's been landscaping and things like that been done to make it look a little prettier, but yes.
Okay. Did you receive the, um, the letters from the professionals, the board engineer and, um, our planner, David Schla?
I did, yes.
Um, David, do you want to take us through?
Sure.
Sorry, we have to swear in our professional.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. Sometimes they're sworn at the beginning of the year.
We all do together.
Not a problem. Uh, gentlemen, do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I, I'm looking at my memo dated October thirty, twenty twenty-five. Uh, there's really not too much to say here. Uh, the, the variance was described by the applicant. Uh, comment number one, identify the height of the pergola. I did see in the application materials, it's nine feet, sorry.
Yes, the clearance is nine feet, and then there'll be a few extra inches or so.
So it'll be about ten feet high.
Yeah, about ten feet high, total.
Um, just for the board of, the maximum height of an accessory structure is twenty feet, so we're well within that limit. Um, is there going to be any outside, outdoor lighting, and whether or not you propose it now, if you choose to propose it in the future, you'll ensure that it's, it'll be downward directed and glare-free, not casting any, uh, light on your neighbors and not becoming...
Yes, we will guarantee that. We do have, um, fans that we are planning to install on the inside, and the lights will probably, will, will be facing downward, but they'll be on the inside of the pergola, not directed outside.
And have a tree removal.
There are no trees involved in installation of the pergola.
Um, that's all I had.
Mr. Schla, would you, for the benefit of the board, um, what is the reason for the minimum requirement of ten feet?
It, it's probably a combination of things, um, open space between structures to, to minimize the, uh, the broad view of structures, probably also rooted in fire codes way back when, when they were, things were, it was more important than it is now. Um, but it's, it's basically to promote open space between buildings nowadays, generally.
This is considered a building even though it has no walls?
Building is, it is a building by definition because it provides shelter.
Right.
Um, a limited amount of shelter. Uh, if it weren't a building, it would be certainly a structure, um, and the requirement applies to buildings and structures, so it doesn't matter so much, but technically this is a building.
So even though it's got a louvered roofing kind of thing, so you're not even, I mean, it's not even solid?
Well, it would protect you from the rain if you're standing under it, that's shelter. It would protect you from the sun if you're standing under it.
Is it not slotted?
It's slotted, but they will close, so they can provide shade.
Yeah, they will open and close, yeah.
Okay. Does that change if it's open and it's just always open?
It, it doesn't matter whether it's a building or a structure, so it, but, and, and the, um, the construction office, the tax assessor, different departments in the town may call it not a building, um, but for zoning purposes, uh, in our definition, that the, the board goes by in zoning ordinance, it's a, it's technically a building, and all buildings are structures. I don't know if that answers your question. It wouldn't matter if, if it's an overhead structure providing some sort of shelter, for example, from the sun on the right angle, it's, we would call it a building. The fact that it's louvered, it counts as a building, it counts as coverage, um, it's a...
Because it's over a patio, it's not changing?
Yeah, because it's over a patio, it's not changing coverage here.
Yeah, well, I was going to ask that because with, with lot coverage, if your existing versus proposed went up, but meanwhile, you're not doing any additional lot coverage.
Correct.
So that probably should be, I would think, change on your, on your application.
There is no, actually, there is a building coverage in this, in this zone, limit. There's no total impermeable coverage like we have pretty much everywhere else in town.
Got it, okay.
But in residential properties in the hills, it, it's only building coverage is regulated, and they're at about twenty percent with the pergola, and they're at thirty-five percent. But, so total impermeable coverage like we're used to talking about does not apply in the hills. They had a stormwater management system that was designed, um, to account for all of that.
So that's not an HOA thing, that's an actual township thing?
That's a township, but the lot, lot coverage, um, and in this case, building, building coverage.
And building, okay.
Here we only have building coverage.
We have a regional basin.
Yeah, it's like, there's a few regional basins.
I, I just have one question. The, um, it says that there's a rain runoff system. Can you explain how that works and where the rain would runoff to?
Yes, um, the way it was explained, what's that? Well, I can do it, I can, I can do it. The way it was explained to me, so it's the four corners of the posts, but apparently, as the rain collects on the top, it's directed to one of the posts, which we can designate, and then the rain will run off on, down one of the posts and then drain outside the patio, or drain on top of the patio and out. So we've already had, um, holes, a proper drainage system installed on our patio so that water can drain off the patio itself.
Okay, and where does it drain when it goes off the patio? Just, does it, I mean, everything's a hill up there, so...
Yeah, so our patio is raised, and then, so there's a drainage system according, that was built by the contractors, so underneath, uh, the walls, and there's a drainage system, and then it's a, there's another drainage system that goes out to our, we have a drain all the way in the back of our property that's directed that way.
So where the, where the, um, existing house roof drains go, that drain goes into the...
It won't be part of the existing house drains.
Okay. It's... It's a separate drain or is it?
All right, so...
Would you like?
I know, but they're on, they're on the hill.
You're welcome, Ms. Popstar, we'll have to swear you in as well.
So, so everything drains down?
There is a separate drainage system.
Hold on, I have to take them.
If you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and could you please state your name for the record?
Preeti Shaw.
All right, thank you. Ms. Shaw, please.
I'm an engineer. I went home all day when they've been building it, so I saw what they did.
Perfect.
He was not home. That's the only reason. He's very smart, he knows a lot, but he was not home.
Would you mind speaking into my microphone?
Sure. So, the patio was built first, and midway through the construction, we had this brilliant idea for a pergola. That's why it's a two separate permits, but, so the patio, because it's raised through the permit, had all the drain mechanisms set up. So there's, uh, gravel, they've put holes in the walls, they've also had this pipe that, that has holes in it that goes down, they've dig, they dug in, outside of the patio into our yard, and then there's a sewer drain at the backyard. I don't know if you can, yeah, so I ca- I don't think you can see it, between eleven and ten, at the very back by the retaining wall, there is a grate, so it goes down to there.
Okay, first.
So we're not going into our neighbors, it's going down to that grate, and it's all part of, it's all fuddled into the patio drain.
Okay, great.
I think that's what you wanted to know.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's going somewhere where it isn't going down the hill, because everything runs down the hill.
Yeah, yeah, you don't want to go in the neighbors.
Into the neighbors property, yeah.
And that is where your house roof drains as well?
What did you say?
The roof from your house, the water, does it drain also to that same location, or does that, is that different?
From our house? Where does the...
The roof drain.
The roof drain.
So what, so, the grate is here.
Right.
And all the houses like thirty-five, thirty-six, thirteen, and higher up the hill.
Right.
All that water comes through our house into that grate.
Ah, okay.
So it's not just our house, like, all our neighbors' water comes in.
It's just a part of the design of the whole community?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then there's even a grate at the front of the house between...
Ten and eleven.
Ten and eleven, by the road. So we have two, and they're connected. So the back is connected to the front, and then it goes down the street.
And I believe there was a question, one of the two gentlemen you had, had, and I was too, was the idea of, how are you ensuring that the pergola gets anchored so that it doesn't blow away massive winds like we had last week?
So, we had footings installed already on our patio, so they are cement footings that are buried into the patio, and they will be installed that way.
Um, also on Mr. Quinn's letter, you had noted that, um, you were looking for more detail.
Yeah, um, Mr. Shaw and I spoke, he, a lot of the detail that I was looking for, he'd already obtained through permitting process at the township engineering department. So like the details of the footings and the, the total height of the thing, details on the total height, and also the fact that it, the pergola does displace the patio, so I did ask if the patio had been subject to permitting and stormwater, and Mr. Shaw assured me it was, so my comments are, are totally addressed through the fact that the department has already permitted this.
Okay, so the grill station that you were talking about, the, the, um, permit for stormwater, yeah?
Yes, yeah.
So I watched them do that.
Yeah.
They dug two feet into my ground. I've just, they've destroyed the entire yard in the process, so I've had to get it regraded and whatever, but...
Okay.
They did from the house to that grill station, two feet in the ground for both gas and electrical line, and...
So you're, you're satisfied with this?
Yeah, but, but again, it was my concern was to make sure that the impermeable coverage associated with the patio had been addressed, because the, the pergola was taking over that, so as long as it had been addressed at the time the patio was done, then there was no need to deal with it at the time of the permit.
Yeah, we did the appropriate permits for the gas, electrical, plumbing.
That's right, so they're already, all my concerns had already been addressed through their permitting with the township, essentially.
This was just a secondary add-on for midway project brilliant idea, but, in the end, it will probably be great, but right now, it doesn't feel that way.
David, if we've proved this, are we approving the exact specification of the pergola so that in ten years, if they change a pergola, we're not just approving the distance from the house, we're approving the spec of the pergola?
You're, well, you're approving that to the, the applicant submitted a representative example photograph in there.
Yes, I have a better diagram if you want to...
But if someone could make it like bigger or taller, that's not a...
Well, they can't make it bigger or taller, then, I mean, if, if it looks a little different, I mean, it's going to be consistent, conceptually, the dimensions are going to be what you approve.
Not the current owners and future owners.
The distance between the house is going to be what you approve.
You mean the dimensions?
The dimensions, actually, for the, for pergolas, it's very interesting, you can't really...
If you move it and you sell your house and someone else takes it, puts up a bigger one, I want to make sure that we're approving the exact size, dimensions, and distance, because in ten years, when you don't like it anymore and take it down, or someone else does, they don't build up twice as big and twice as tall. That's all I'm trying to make sure.
Right, right.
When approval is, if we give an approval, it's the exact approval, not...
Correct.
Just the distance from the house approval for the structure.
Dimensions are locked in.
Right.
The aesthetics of it, I think that the application indicates it's going to be white.
Yes.
If some future homeowner down the road wants to paint it black, unless the board specifies that they're approving it because it's white.
And, and...
The HHMA has to...
Should the board act favorably?
Yeah, they have to.
That will all be spelled out in the resolution. Right, no, it's a mixture. Right, and, and just for the sake of the homeowners and any subsequent homeowners, that would all be spelled out in the resolution, so that there wouldn't be any confusion as to exactly what we're discussing right now. Did you, um, did the HHMA or your local, it's HA, it's under your, you're under HHMA, right?
Yeah.
Master Association, was there any issues, there always is...
No concerns, yeah.
Conversations, and, and you can't, you had to contact your neighbors, your neighbors say anything?
That's part of the approval for the HHMA.
I used to live up the hill, so...
Yeah, so, they all were fine.
One even said, how do I do it? And then...
Okay, so no discussion?
Yeah, it's a very pricey pergola, it's not a possible...
Actually, to go more than twelve feet, it increases the cost, there's a limit to how long the louvers can be, yeah, so...
Right, so this is your house.
Correct.
This is a different house.
With a sample pergola, yeah, that kind of pergola, yeah.
And it, and the thing is, you couldn't really make it bigger, because we're putting it at the corners of the patio anyway. I mean, you, you'd have to do something really weird.
Lots of things.
It's fine, I get it.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so also, just for the record, we did have an environmental commission review, but there were no comments, uh, as you're aware. Um, and did anybody else have any other questions or concerns? No, does anybody from the public have any questions? Seeing none, um, any comments on this application? Okay, then I'm going to go and turn it over to the board, if anybody wants to kick us off.
My main concern was, um, the prohibition on a distance of less than ten feet, and understanding now that it's no longer for, to protect against fire hazards, I don't see any problem with this application. I think it's going to make the, the patio look beautiful, and it's nice and open, it's not blocking the view from the house, it's not, you know, in any way obstructing the area, it's nice and wide open, and the only thing that's covered is the roof, which I understand even opens, so I think it's wonderful, I'm, I'm well for it.
Is that, is that a motion in there?
I agree with you.
I support your, I support your findings.
So, I, in that case, I move to deem the application complete and direct our board to draft a resolution memorializing the decision to grant the relief sought by the applicant, subject to the conditions we discussed.
Yes.
Yeah, we did.
Okay.
So that would be subject to the conditions we discussed, which is that you wouldn't be able to change, um, the square footage, essentially, you can't change the height, you can't change the, the footprint, essentially.
Yep. Is that a C one?
That is a C one. C two, two.
C two.
C two.
Two flexion. It's C two.
C two variance.
Have a second?
No hardship.
I'll go ahead and second it. Okay, just, um, a, a couple of comments. Um, I, I don't see any, um, hardship here, um, I, I see this as a C two, a variance, um, there's just, there's no detriment, uh, to the public good, there's, I, I think it's just, um, it's just a nice addition, so good luck with it.
Thank you.
Ms. Lehman?
Ms. Herrera?
Yes.
Mr. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Padici?
Yes.
Ms. Popstar?
Yes.
Ms. Trapp?
Yes.
Chairwoman Baumann?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Can I just say one thing? So the pergola is alumina, what is it?
Aluminum.
Aluminum, so it's not even a fire hazard, it's a metal.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I did, I did see that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I don't want roads next to me to sign up.
No, we don't.
Ready?
She voided her...
Next on the agenda is Bond, Zachary Bond, block fourteen oh five, lot three, one twenty-nine West Oak Street with bulk variances, ZB two five zero two four. Is not here.
Going once.
No, okay, so then, that's new territory for me.
So, um, given the non-appearance of the applicant, uh, I would recommend that the board, uh, dismiss the application without prejudice, meaning that the, the applicant failed to appear.[1662.12]
If they, I'm sorry.
Did they?
I don't want to make them submit a whole application just because they didn't show up. Maybe until they were down here.
I'm happy to.
And then, but still, I wouldn't dismiss it because who knows what happened. They're just going to have to refile them and open over again when we already have submitted application is complete and before us.
They'll have to renotice. No, we can't carry it because they can't consent to it, they would be carrying it too. So regardless, they'll have to renotice. I respect your position that.
We've never done anything like that.
That's fine.
That seems very strict.
Do people typically not appear? That's pretty bad as well.
Always have and, and people have, you know, we've had issues.
Okay.
So why don't we go on to the next application and then we'll see what happens after. Is that okay? So we'll go out of order and Mr. Stoddard, I presume, block 2905, lot 12, 74 Winding Lane with bulk variances, ZB 25030.
Thank you, and I will, I will talk slow in hopes that maybe they show up, so.
If I can ask you to speak into the microphone.
You got it.
And I believe we're going to get you sworn in.
Of course.
Do all three? Raise your hand and, yeah, we'll do all three at the same time. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're all about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And would you please state your name to the record?
Jeffrey Stoddard, and it's 74 Winding Lane.
Okay, Mr. Stoddard, would you like to tell us why you're here?
Absolutely. So we are here.
I'm sorry, Mr. Stoddard, before you begin, just for, I hate to interrupt you, just for the sake of the record, I do want to confirm that Mr. Stoddard's notice was sufficient for both timing and content and therefore the board does have jurisdiction to hear this matter. My apologies.
Oh, no, you're fine. So we're here, it's a simple project replacing an aging improperly sloped patio with a small low-profile deck at the rear of our home. Goal is to create a safe and functional outdoor space for our family to maintain and still maintain the character of the neighborhood. Been working closely with the contractor and the township staff, thank you, to ensure that the plan meets the spirit of the ordinance and the correct, correct superior non-conforming condition of the property, which is the existing patio and the impervious surface that is currently there. So it's a 22 and a half by 11-foot deck off the rear of our house. Requesting a exception in the variance because it requires a 50-foot setback, which would be somewhere in our front lawn if that was to come to fruition. So we're asking for about 13 feet. It's about 13 feet because the property line of the house behind us is at a slight angle, so it would go there. But the existing non-conforming lot coverage of 18.57% would be corrected in this, bringing it down to 17.36, which is below the 18%. It is an open deck with a railing, Trex material. No additional lighting is being put on. There are no trees being removed as part of this project. There's lots, if you look at the pictures, they were from October of this year. Lots of privacy. I would be surprised if my neighbors even knew there was a patio or a deck going back there.
I'm going to slow you down for a second.
Please.
You're doing a great job, though.
Thanks.
If we could, you're referring to the pictures?
Yes.
That are in our packages?
Yes, ma'am.
And I will say that I did drive by the property and it is very well shielded and And when did you take these pictures?
October.
October?
Yes.
And you would say that this is how it, oh, October, just a month?
Of this, yes. Maybe with the addition of some leaves on the ground, but yes, that would be it.
Okay.
And you spoke to your neighbors about this and they have no objection?
We had one neighbor that approached us, just wanted to make sure that there was no water drainage issues. That was the big concern of the neighborhood, but we're actually fixing it because right now the patio is sloped towards our house, so.
But you're taking the patio out?
Yes, correct. And the grading will be fixed when we do that.
What type of water issues are you having?
The patio is angled towards our house a bit, so heavy rains, we can get it in the window wells in the backyard, so. Not fun.
So you're taking the patio out, you're replacing it with an open deck?
Correct.
A portion.
Portion, yes, sorry, I should correct that, a portion of the patio.
So you're going, very quickly addressing several of the issues. Mr. Schley, did you have anything in particular?
Looking at my October 30, 2025 memo, first few comments are just factual. The comment number five, any lighting proposed?
None.
If you choose to do so in the future, it'll be downward directed and shielded from the.
Correct.
Comment number six, any tree removal?
None.
Okay. And the trees that are providing the buffering that's there now will be protected during construction?
Yes.
Comment number seven, you agree that any approval of the proposed open deck means the deck must remain an open deck, meaning nothing covering it, no walls under it, above it, open railings only?
Correct.
And I need to add one additional comment that I did not put in my memo was that the stepping stone walkway that is included in your coverage calculations but not shown on the plan, needs to be shown on the plan when you apply for your permit.
Okay.
So that your coverage calculations match with what the engineering department will be looking at on the plan.
Will do.
That was all I had, thank you.
And Mr. Stoddard, you agree that you'll make sure that that is done?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Quinn?
Yeah, this is a pretty minor one. I had two comments. We've already discussed every yard screening and no trees to be removed. The other was whether there's going to be any threshold that exceeds the 25,000 square feet. The township would have 5,000 square feet. He'd have to disturb about a third of the lot to reach the SCD criteria, so he's not going to touch any of those, so I have no other comments on this one other than that.
Okay, and then the environmental commission? Did you see the environmental commission's report?
I did.
So they note just best management practices with the topography and stormwater, but it seems that you're addressing that. So in consideration during site work and as part of the final site grading and restoration, in addition, implementation of best management practices to preserve and protect the trees as Mr. Schley had mentioned, the commission would like to note if any trees have been taken out, and you said that there have not been, correct?
None, correct.
Regarding the application, the environmental commission feels that the long-term tree survivability should be the goal of any tree replacement plan. We're good there. They're letting you know, just to be aware of the potential for in-ground tanks, lead paint, but you're not removing anything, you're not digging anything down. And during demolition, would you consider recycling, repurposing or gifting any demolished material?
If anybody's interested in old pavers, absolutely.
Okay.
Facebook Marketplace.
Yes.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Stoddard?
So no neighbors can really visually see it right now and the new structure, even though it's going to be raised, they still wouldn't have visibility?
Correct, it's, correct. Yeah. It's a, it's a small backyard and as when we bought the house, the realtor called it an abbreviated backyard. It is very secluded in that manner, so, yeah.
Like even the raised part, you'd say still.
Yeah.
Did you talk to that neighbor about the project or did you just notice them?
Just noticed, yeah.
Anybody else?
And it's going to be, the color's going to be dark, something dark brown?
Yep, like a brownish, like woody-ish looking, yes.
Do any members of the public have any questions or any comments? Seeing none to both? Then I would say let's kick it off. Would somebody like to kick it off? Anybody have any thoughts?
I think it's not a problem at all, mostly because the yard is incredibly sheltered. I also drove by it and you're very secluded, so I think anything you do back there, we probably wouldn't have even known, but it's good that you're here.
Play by the rules.
And I think improvement on the property.
So, motion?
I move to deem the application complete and direct our board attorney to draft a resolution memorializing our decision to grant the relief sought by the applicant. This would be, I believe this is a C1 variance based on the size of the lot and the compositions of, you know, the 50 feet, that's just not possible, as you said, it would be like the front yard. So it's a C1 variance, there's no substantial detriment to public good, and there's no impairment of the intent and purpose of the zoning plan.
Thank you, Ms. Herrera.
I'll second.
Mr. Kraus was first to second.
Yeah, he was faster.
It was a little faster than Ms. Popstar.
Ms. Herrera?
Yes.
Mr. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Padici?
Yes.
Ms. Popstar?
Yes.
Ms. Trapp?
Yes.
Chairwoman Allen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stoddard.
Thank you all.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Oh, this is Mr. Bond.
Good timing.
Mr. Bond, you might want to thank Mr. Stoddard.
All right, well, thank you for that. I apologize. I thought it was tomorrow for some reason and I was going over the stuff on my laptop and luckily Joanne sent me an email, so thank you very much.
Good job.
Wonderful.
And I live close by.
All right, so then, Mr. Bond, we're going to have you step right up to the microphone here.
Wow, all right, no delay.
And this is Zachary Bond for completeness in public hearing, block 1405, lot 3, 129 West Oak Street, bulk variances, ZB 25024. Mr. Bond, welcome.
Thank you.
Professional legalism?
Sure.
Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to provide is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, thank you. Now, before we start, I just want to note that I did review the applicant's public notices. They have been duly published and served on property ownership under 100 feet, but they are sufficient for both content and time.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Bond, you are here, I believe, for an addition. Would you like to tell us a little bit about what you have planned?
Yes, so as you can see from the overhead view, there's a slight bump out on the back, like the rear left portion of the home. I wanted to meet that, that's just one story. I wanted to kind of meet that with the overall profile of the house bumping out. And then my goal was to be able to adjust the kitchen over to the right side and then put a one-story addition with a gable roof that would come off the rear to kind of open up and make the house a little more livable. It's kind of a small footprint as it sits right now. It's about 26 by 24, so I just was hoping to get a little more livable space on the first floor and to expand out through to the second floor with that profile of what I have there. And then I kind of brushed over, but I do want to put a dormer on the front of the house, and the front of the house is within the setback because I believe I lose the first 15 feet due to it being a county road, so I am within the setback in the front. I wanted to put a dormer on in the third floor to make that room a little more accessible. It does have a staircase that walks up to the third floor, so it can make it at least a more usable space.
Do you have the pictures with you or do you want to walk us through these?
So the front of the house, I kind of gave a facelift to give it a little more curb appeal, so that is essentially what the front would look like with just the addition of a dormer on the top and I could use a new roof. Along, you could see in the back, the bump out.
Is that photo re- shown?
Sorry.
First, when were these photos taken?
A couple of weeks ago, I would say.
October?
Sure, yeah, I think that's.
Did you take the photos?
I did, yes.
So is this the dormer, proposed dormer, or you're popping a dormer out?
So I would like the dormer to be, yeah, coming out of the roof right here, meeting the peak of the roof line and coming out as a gable on the front of the house, coming out to about the front edge, just short of it, is the goal for the dormer. We move around to the rear of the home. This is the existing bump out that I'm talking about. I would like to bring it up and across essentially. It's about just under six foot, it's about five and a half foot off the back of the house. So I would like to be able to bump this out because then I could extend the bathroom here, give myself essentially a master bedroom. All my bedrooms upstairs are relatively small. And then I would meet the profile coming across here and off of that, I would like to do a one-story addition. It would be within the, the kind of the extending the profile, so my setback would be the same as the house is right now. But along the right-hand side, I would like to go a little bit deeper with a addition on the back that would be about 16 foot off the back of the proposed bump out.
Seems like you're talking this.
Yes.
So I'm just confused why there's a front yard variance you asked for when you already have a, I assume the dormer's not going to extend beyond 14.
Well, the, the front of the home is technically within the setback of the front yard. Same with the side of the home, like the, the lot is very small, so anything I do to the front of the house, as it's been told to me, I have to get a variance for because the house is already in the setback, is my understanding. So that wasn't something I realized until.
Most of the house is in the front yard now, so you can't add, even if you're adding on top of something that's already there, it's more a massive structure in the front yard.
So this wood porch?
I agree.
I'm sorry, the reason for that is that if you picture it as a one-story house, it's grandfathered to be too close to the street. It's a lot more impact if it was a two-story house that close to the street. So if you wanted to put a second floor on that house, it would have to be setback further or you'd have to get a variance, and that's essentially what we're doing here, making it a taller house. So there's a taller structure, which to me would seem to have more impact on the street being that tall. Not that this is that tall, but I'm saying you're putting more structure within the required setback. Whether you're doing it horizontally or vertically, it requires variance.
Another way to think about it is if the board had approved that porch, you'd want an applicant to come back if they were going to do something like this. So I would defer with the professional.
But to be clear, it's within the, I'm not going any higher, I'm not coming out past the front. Everything will be.
No, you're not anticipating any deviation.
Exactly, okay, thank you.
But the porch is original to the house because it looks like it's brand new, but it's not.
No, I just, I wrapped it with cedar and I refinished the floor and I redid a lot of it, but no, the porch was there when I bought the house.
So then the dormer, it looks like is coming out to the edge of the porch, so you'll actually be able to walk out of it?
No, 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 I don't want it, it has nothing to do with the porch, it's just going to be.
That's what it looks like, that's why I'm asking. Isn't this the porch?
No, that is, it's the interior walls on both sides, so you see, that's essentially, yeah, so your walls end there and then it goes upwards, so, yeah, I'm not much of an architect, I'm doing what I can here.
The dormer's not even going to come past.
No.
The top.
No.
So it's nowhere even closer to the bottom.
Right, then it wouldn't be.
Yes.
Someone probably shows a better.
Yes, exactly, that's, thank you.
I appreciate it. So if I could show you this, that.
Okay, perfect, thank you, thank you. So you're not coming out of the porch?
No, not, nothing to do with the, with the porch. Thank you.
I did have a chance to walk the property today, you probably saw me on your Ring camera or something.
I didn't have a chance to check it.
I knocked on the door to see what it was like. I just walked in the backyard just to see what it looked like. And the one question I had is, the driveway does go back to one or two car garage, whatever the garage is. I noticed that you had a trailer back there and everything, but it's all gravel. Are you removing that gravel so it's grass back there because that would be, it would be coverage if it was left? It looks like someone just probably parked cars back there and it even goes to the next door.
Yeah, it's how I bought the property, you know, I didn't really add any gravel, you know, the overhead kind of shows you what's there. Yeah, the, as far as it goes around the back of the house, all that will be coming out, obviously, for where the addition's going, and then that whole area, like I have my trailer parked next to the shed now, it's not going to be there, you know, once I start doing all this because it's just not going to be accessible.
As part of the construction, do we, as a township, say it has to be grassed and not gravel anymore? I mean, as far as.
I'm not sure where we're actually.
So are we talking about more gravel than is shown on the survey?
Yeah, so if you go straight back from the driveway to the garage, that's gravel, but to the right of that, kind of all, it's almost the whole backyard right there.
Well.
It's kind of gravel.
So there's.
Yeah, what's shown on the drawing, you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, it's not like solid gravel.
It's a scarce, it's kind of sprinkled, yeah.
It looks like they almost drove into the other parking lot next door to it.
Yeah, that's, was all kind of there. As far as the areas that's completely coated in gravel, I think it's pretty in line with that. It doesn't go past the front of the garage, it does kind of veer off a little bit and it's like, yeah, it's intermittently kind of thrown out, but I don't.
Condition that it turns back to.
That's, yeah. That's, yeah.
Versus when the gravel gets removed, it doesn't get used as a.
Yeah, anything beyond what's shown there, you'll need approval for because you're over.
Yeah, that's.
When the inspector goes out there to check that.
Yeah, no, I have no, I have no issue with that, that's just kind of.
The other thing I noticed on the right side of the house, which I guess would be the, to the east or west, I don't even know, east, there's kind of a temporary HVAC thing system.
Yeah.
Maybe it's permanent, but it looks like it's going to hang.
Yeah, no, I just, the line sets I got to clean up.
Is that the permanent structure that's going to be there?
Is that a heat pump?
Force it or?
Yeah, 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 it's a, yeah, that's, that's, I mean, I got permits for that at the time.
They don't, they don't require pads, AC pumps, I think.
No, there is a pad.
I did put a little pad under it, yeah.
I was wondering if that was the permanent thing that's.
That's, yeah.
Yeah, that's how AC pumps are set up, I think, right?
Yeah, and I mean, I went through the appropriate channels.
I'm not saying anything wrong with that, I'm just making sure that the pad was the dimensions of the permanent pad and it's not going to change with that.
No, 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 I intend for that, everything over there to be exactly how it is.
Yeah, I'm not a electrician or anything, I just want to make sure that coverage itself would be stable because it will, you know, your process will change.
Yeah, yeah, no, I don't intend to to mess with that whatsoever, that's going to stay.
So whatever you put on your, if it was two by two or four by four, is going to be the coverage that would remain?
For the, the pad itself, you're saying? I don't really know, to be honest with you.
Put it on like this here. It says four square feet for the AC.
Yeah, there's some of those shown on the survey, I think that's what that was.
Okay, so that's, okay, I just want to make sure that that's the coverage that's needed and.
Yeah, everything that's shown on the survey is included in the coverage calculation that was provided. It's just the extra stuff that you observed.
Yeah, okay.
It's not, and that, that won't be allowed to be there by the end of the project.
Yeah, like the, as far as the gravel's concerned and everything like that, the.
Basically, what's here on your survey is what you're good for if the board approves that.
Yes, I mean, I, I guess the the pad itself is probably not on the survey, but it's like a, I mean, if I got to take it up and then just mount it to the side of the house, that's fine, but.
There's something shown.
It says four square feet on this calculation, so I didn't know if that was what was, there was. I didn't measure it when I was out there or anything crazy like that, I just saw it, yeah.
It's shown on the survey too, you have a couple AC pads on the same side of the house, right?
Maybe the survey's not accurate as far as those pads go?
Okay, so it has the AC.
Same side of the house.
Yeah, that's it, I mean, that's where it it is, but I just, I put a, like a, I. It was a single unit, now it's a double, and I put a pad under it. So I mean, it might be, you know, a couple square feet larger.
Well, that's what we're struggling with, since you're over impervious cover, we're trying to make sure we get a number that represents, yeah.
This is a picture of it, I just took a picture, I don't know if I can even show that or not. You should, I got it, to the engineer, just to say that, correct, I just want you to have enough, you know, coverage to.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I.
If you want to amend your application, ask the board for a few more square feet.
I think that's probably the best way to go about it.
I would make that like twelve square feet.
It's not something that even at the time, I think, David might have added AC unit because he was doing a good job with the review. But I honestly didn't even think about it, so if I can amend for, I guess, yeah, an extra.
Additional twelve square feet of impervious cover.
Well, I think twelve total would be.
Twelve total, I guess, okay, yeah, so eight square feet.
Eight more.
Okay, sorry about that, that didn't occur to me.
So eight, eight square feet additional?
Yeah, on top of what he shows.
And then what does that bring us to percentage wise?
I can't find my phone, dude. Okay, I got it, okay. Like I do, but my phone.
Take it, take it.
Mr. Bond, while we're, while we're figuring out the numbers, are there any plans for any stormwater management on site?
Not particularly, no, I, I figured if if there was something that would be required, I'd hear it from you guys, but I don't really have anything.
Are there any issues with water now on the site? Have any rains or are you getting, where are you seeing the water run to?
It kind of runs, I get some runoff from the church that kind of comes across the property. You know, some of it kind of pools a little behind the garage if it's a lot of water. But, yeah, I, I guess it would come down, some of it comes across the driveway, there's a drain there that it goes into. Yeah, I, I don't.
Is the back of the church entirely paved?
That's all gravel.
It's all gravel, it's all, it's all lot covered. And does, does the grade slope from the church down towards your property and down the street?
In some areas. Yeah, yeah, it's like, I, I think towards the back, it's not as bad. But, yeah, it's slightly.
I have a question also, on your survey, you have a note here, discussion topic, asphalt driveway crosses boundary line.
Yeah.
What does, is that where asphalt driveway or is it the neighbor's?
So, yeah, where the fence is, some of my coverage is the neighbor's driveway. So the, the fence is, I think it was one point eight foot onto my lot. So part of that impervious coverage that is his driveway is counted as my coverage, just based on where the fence is. And that was like that when I bought it.
And so the fence is, wouldn't it have into your property then?
Yeah, impervious coverage is counted to your lot line, but he's saying effectively he can't use that because.
No, it's the neighbor's property.
But regardless, it's still part of your property.
Yeah, well, I, yeah, it's my property, it's the neighbor's driveway, effectively.
You will mess with it.
I believe I do because it's, the backside of the fence is facing my house, so I believe I own it. Yeah, I didn't want to start fighting with the neighbors as soon as I got in there, so it's not something that's really come up, but.
Is there, is a wide curb opening in front of the street that serves both of you?
That serves both driveways, yes. Yeah, so I've been there for like a year and a half, yeah.
The coverage number, it was thirty-one point five one percent. And with the additional eight square feet, it goes up to thirty-one point eight eight percent.
So it was thirty-one point five and it was thirty-five, thirty-one point five eight?
Thirty-one point five one to thirty-one point five eight, yeah.
Thank you.
So if I could ask, Mr. Quinn, you probably know where I'm going. I know that you purchased the home already with a high impervious coverage rate, and now we're adding more. I don't have, I don't see grading on here, so I can't see where water is going. Do you have thoughts or suggestions on stormwater management, what could be done?
I did, actually, I mean.
I mean, I know in your, your memo, you, you note.
Yeah, he's only adding like three hundred fifty square feet, which technically makes him exempt from stormwater management. But the lot is about thirteen hundred square feet over what our impervious cover limitation is. So what we typically have been doing is asking people to mitigate the problems associated with SS impervious cover. We've been asking for stormwater management to help mitigate that. In this case, I recommend that that he does enough for the addition, the three hundred fifty square feet, since, how long have you had the property?
Like a year and a half.
And it's been like this, for who knows how long, forever, right?
I assume, yeah.
And if this additional gravel, gravel cover that Carl noted that's coming out of there, I'd be satisfied with him at least providing a dry well or some sort of impound for the new addition, grabbing a piece of the back of the house.
Okay. Yeah, that, I mean, that's.
Is that something you could agree to?
Yeah, that's fair, I mean, I, I was kind of waiting for somebody to tell me to do it, so I mean, if the, that's it, that's it.
So what will happen is the town engineering department will look at this, you don't have to, you'll, you'll just agree to do it.
Okay.
You submit your final plans to the town engineer for your permit. They'll make you do a soil test there, so you'll have to just, you know, when you get your back out there, back out there, do a soil test in there and make sure you have permeability.
Okay.
And then it's three inches of runoff for every square foot of impervious cover.
Three inches of runoff, okay.
You'll, you'll see it in the ordinance, if you have any questions, call me after the meeting, but.
I appreciate it, okay.
It's pretty small, it'll be pretty small.
But it's something that can be worked out with the engineering department and.
Yeah, absolutely.
And you have no issue.
I have no objections to it, no, that's.
So we'll make that a stipulation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Quinn, do you want to just go through the rest of your?
Sure.
Letter while we're.
Yeah, I mean, the, the big thing was the stormwater management, just noting that while it's a minor, I mean, it's exempt from its total increase. Because we're looking at the lot as a whole, they've agreed to, to provide some, some runoff mitigation. Other than that, I note that the proposed additions, as you pointed out, none of the additions are closer than, than any of them are to the property line now. But extending in mass and, and extend into the yard requires additions. And also that this, this lot being so small, it's not likely that you'll cross the township or soil conservation district threshold for disturbance. Five thousand square feet, I don't know how much you're going to end up conserving, it doesn't look like you're going to do much. I mean, this whole thing, this whole lot is probably.
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand square, yeah, right. So you'd have to disturb half of it, and then you'd be in soil conservation district territory, five thousand square feet, you'd have to conserve the district from them. But if you do a quarter of that, like twenty-five hundred square feet, which I still don't think you're going to do here, you'll have to deal with the township, they want to see soil conservation district measures, soil, cell fence and all of that.
Gotcha, okay.
I don't think he's going to hit those thresholds, but that's an advisory to you.
Okay.
That's all I had on this.
Mr. Schly, is there anything that we didn't touch on in your letter?
Yeah, just a couple of things in my October thirty, twenty twenty-five memo. Comment number two, the, the front porch, that's going to be made an open porch, just like you have it. And I don't know if you're putting railings across the front like you have on the sides, but they'd be open railings.
I don't plan on putting any railings, that's kind of why I went for the continuous step going across, I like the aesthetic better.
So you're, you're agreeable to.
Yes, it'll be open.
Comment number five, exterior lighting, if you're proposing any, it'll be downward directed, shielded, so it's not a nuisance to your neighbors.
Absolutely, yeah.
Comment number six, do we talk about whether there's going to be any tree removal or disturbance?
There's no trees within, yeah, I don't need to take anything out to do it.
And I'll add one, and that is when you submit your, your plan for your permit, be sure to add the additional eight square feet of the utility pad or wherever it is.
Okay.
Draw that in there.
Sure.
So it matches with your, and, and update your coverage calculations to include it.
Okay, absolutely.
That's all I had, thank you.
Okay.
I just have one question, in the front yard, is the front path changing at all from the step? It's kind of a.
Yeah, I'm going to put.
But kind of like you can't find it right now, so when I was trying to get on the porch, I wasn't even sure how to get up there, so.
Yeah, it's a project that kind of started and.
I'm just wondering if you're going to figure or change it any because that's covered.
So it is, yes, I, I have it in there, I plan on, basically, there's a little cut halfway up through the little like rock wall that I'm going to basically just come off with. I think as I put it on here, it was about three foot wide, it'll come in, you know, halfway up the driveway ascension, essentially, and then turn left and go straight to the front door. And that, those numbers are in there for, I think it was about maybe fifteen foot long, three foot wide, and then a little jog going off to the side, so.
Okay, and, and Mr. Bond, there was a, an environmental commission memo, September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five. Did you receive that memo?
I did receive something.
I can, I can go over it.
If you don't mind, I would appreciate it, I'm a little behind the eight ball here.
So the environmental commission notes that due to the site and surrounding topography, stormwater best management practices should be given extra consideration during site work and as part of final site grading and restoration. In addition, implementation of best management practices to preserve and protect trees during your, your site work and construction.
Okay.
Okay? This is something that we didn't actually talk about, we're talking about the excess impervious coverage. The commission had suggested maybe the planting of some native trees or shrubs that might, you know, help with absorbing water runoff. I don't know, is there anywhere on your site that you might be able to?
I did want to put bushes in along the front, like along the roadway. I was planning on at some point, and I think I'm going to put a berm in the back to better buffer from the neighbor's yard because everything that they, like, it, it's just kind of clunky, the neighbor's backyard and where he has all of his garbage cans and stuff like that, you can kind of see through mine. So I was probably going to put like a little berm along the back and add some trees, and then same with along the front, some bushes. That was the only stuff that I had really planned on as of now.
So, so we'll consider that, that you'll comply with that? And note, note that, you know, things that are native to New Jersey are.
Yeah, I'm not looking for anything exotic.
They asked if any tree permits have been taken out or replacement, but we're not, you're not removing any trees.
No.
And due to the age of the existing dwelling, the environmental commission would like the applicant to be aware of the potential for in-ground tanks, lead paint and asbestos. Proper precautions should be taken during any demolition. And that during any sort of demolition, that you would consider recycling or repurposing, gifting any of the older materials.
Okay.
So.
Yeah.
You have no issue with any of the.
No, I have no objections to recycling what I can and, you know.
So you're going to comply with the environmental commission's memo? Okay, did anybody else have any other questions?
As senior builder, are you going to stay in the property or it doesn't matter?
Yeah, no, I've kind of just started doing contracting now. I, I worked for a home builder for a little while and now, yeah, I, I just moved into this property like a year and a half ago and I've been wanting to kind of fix it up and do something with it. But yeah, I'm working, I have, it's a small contracting company right now and, yeah, that's where I was prior to this, if you can tell by looking at me, but.
And the exterior of the house doesn't look like the front part that you changed or?
Yeah, I want to do some plank around the side, so the front is like a board and batten and then the side will be a plank. But I've got to obviously paint it so all, you know, the colors don't match right now and everything. So when it's all said and done, yeah, it'll be painted the same. And I, I, you know, it'll be essentially the kind of like, you know, whether it's hardy plank or, you know, if I can salvage some of the aluminum, I will, hopefully that works with the environmental.
A couple houses down the street did that too, right, that they remodeled?
I, I know a guy a couple houses down just did a, a pretty big, yeah, like full build. And, yeah, kind of, it would have the same aesthetic, like the hardy plank, yeah, white, yeah, exactly, so. That's what I'm going for.
But thank you for considering the stormwater management because I, I struggle sometimes when, when we're over so much in impervious coverage. And I know that a lot of it's not your fault, and there is a hardship with this property because of the size of it. But to, you know, knowing that you're going to be adding, you know, more impervious coverage, I'm grateful that you're, and we're all grateful that you're willing to implement some stormwater management.
No, I appreciate, I appreciate you, you're working with me with it, you know, I, I figured it could be a stipulation of moving forward and, yeah, I, I, you know, where I can, where I can compromise, I think that's, that's good.
Terrific. So any members of the public have any questions? Seeing none, any comments? Seeing none. In that case, we could move it over to the board. Do you want a summary, does anybody want a summary? Do we feel like we're in a position?
I'm uncomfortable, I don't know, do you need me to go through any of the conditions we discussed?
Maybe the stipulations stuff is.
Yeah.
Sure. So you're going to clean up the gravel and make sure that it reflects what's on the survey. Any area where the gravel spilled over to your yard, you'll make sure it's covered with grass. You're going to update the plans to show, or, or to accurately reflect the concrete pad, the utility pad. And for that, you also amended your application to seek an increase in impervious coverage for that condition. You also agreed to work with the engineering department to include a dry well for the rear addition. And then you agreed to comply with the comments in the environmental commission's report. I believe that covers the conditions that the board noted.
Right, and we're looking at a variance for the minimum front yard, a variance for the minimum combined, combined side yards, and a variance for the maximum lot coverage. Anybody want to kick us off? Three for three?
Three for three.
No, you can go ahead.
No, for Hattrick, Hattrick, Hattrick tonight.
I think this is a really nice application, I love what you're doing, I think it's definitely in character with what is going on in the neighborhood, a lot of changes for the better. So I move to deem the application complete and direct our board attorney to draft a resolution memorializing our decision to grant the release sought by the applicant subject to the stipulations. And this would be a C-one variance due to the undersized lot. I don't think there's any substantial detriment to the public good. Again, it's not substantially out of character with what's going on in the neighborhood right now. I think a lot of houses are, are doing this. And it's no substantial impairment of the intent and purpose of the zoning. a lot of houses are, are doing this and it's no substantial impairment of the intended purpose of the zoning plan.
I have to agree, I'll, I'll second it because, um, I, I love the people who are finally fixing up these old homes on Oak Street and it's, it's really changing that whole street state and turned it into a, a very nice entry into the center of town. So I'm, I'm definitely faithful to this project.
Thank you.
Ms. Ferrera?
Yes.
Mr. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Pedici?
Yes.
Ms. Hoxter?
Yes.
Ms. Chubb?
Yes.
Chairwoman Vaughn?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you all very much, I appreciate it.
Glad you made it.
Yes.
Some of you guys, some of these boards.
I've always wanted to say this to the one, I presume.
He's not doing work at my house and I do not know anything.
Yeah, exactly, no conflict of interest, thank you guys very much.
Thank you, good luck.
And good luck.
Okay, um, do we need to, um, cancel the November thirteenth special meeting? I believe we do. Yes. Do you have a motion? Do we need a motion? I just, okay, so. I did gamble, so I am hereby cancelling the November thirteenth, twenty twenty-five special meeting. The next meeting will be on December third. Do we have any comments from members? Anyone, anyone that comments from staff? Yes, happy Thanksgiving, motion to adjourn?